Good morning, everyone. My name is Will Marie Newton, and I'd like to thank you for joining us today. Should you have any questions, please type them in the chat box, and we will answer your questions after the presenters have concluded their discussion. If you have any questions after the webinar has ended, please feel free to email our presenters, and they will answer your questions at the earliest convenience. Please note that this webinar will be archived on CAPE's website under Professional Development, and I would like to turn it over to Bob Rader.
Hi. Good morning, everybody, and thank you for joining us. We have a very interesting subject with one of the best presenters I know in Connecticut or anywhere else to talk about what is a very sensitive subject. As you all know, since the, in the three weeks since George Floyd was killed, there have been many, many protests across the country and in Connecticut. We have had a discussion on a national level about police brutality. And what you should also know is that this is a time when our students are home. They may be watching the news more. And certainly, the emotional stresses of this time, especially when, if you look at the facts and figures, people of color are being hit harder by the COVID virus, it gives you an idea what pressures were under. So it was very wonderful of Dr. Martha Brackeen Harris to agree to speak to us on these sensitive issues. I was on a webinar last night having to do with diversity that was given by the State Educational Resource Commission, CIRC, and I think it's Council, not Commission, but at any rate, one of the speakers started off by saying, center yourself to hear other perspectives. For many of us, the perspectives that will be shared today are different than certainly what we grew up with, certainly what we may consider our background is. But we wanted this to be a conversation, and we will leave at least a half an hour for your questions. So with that, I want to introduce Dr. Martha Brackeen Harris. She likes being called Martha. And Martha is a retired educator with over 40 years of extensive experience in working with students and adults in a variety of public schools, independent schools, and college settings. She's former director of the Beginning Teachers Institute, and her passion for mentoring new and experienced teachers was born there. She's a founding member and served for 34 years as a trustee of the Sphere Consortium of Independent Schools, an organization that seeks to make Hartford area independent schools welcoming and safe communities for all employees and students. Over the past few years, she has conducted school and community conversations about diversity, equity, inclusion, and social justice by using current books about these topics. Martha holds a bachelor's degree from the Pennsylvania State University and both a master's and doctoral degree from the University of Hartford. And with that, Martha, we talked, you and I talked about a lot of titles for this webinar, but we decided to call it Dear School Boards, Your Students and Staff of Color Are Not Okay. What Can School Boards and Superintendents Do? What do you think that means?
Okay, well, first of all, welcome, everybody. I'm glad you joined us, and thank you, Patrice and Rob. We've had, Bob, we've had many of these discussions just over lunch, just, you know, when we're talking. So I'm really happy to be able to share some of the things that we've done. I always preface workshops with some ground rules, and since I can't see you, I've chosen two that I just want us to, want you to keep in mind. The first is excuse the oops and the ouches. This is not, this is not a presentation that is, you know, that I will read everything's research that, that I've been very careful to check before, you know, with other people. This is a conversation from my heart. Therefore, we may have to say, I may have to say some things that may make you go oops or ouch, but just forgive that because we, if we can't do that, then why have conversations? In order to move, we have to be able to deal with things like that. The other thing is to lean into your discomfort. These, some of the things we talk about are going to be uncomfortable for all of us, but stay with it and lean into it and try to understand it in the different perspectives or make a note to check on that later. So discomfort is real. We're all in discomfort, and so I want you to just lean into it. It's so interesting. I had a lot of things to do last night, but I got a phone call from a former employee, former colleague of mine. She's the only Black teacher in her school. And going through everything that she's gone through and not really having anybody right, you know, anybody of, one of her colleagues that she could speak with, she got to the point where she had to call me. Now, you know, I had a lot to do, but if she called me and needed to talk, I needed to talk. So for two and a half hours, we just talked about everything she needed to talk about. One thing that really, two things really struck me. One thing was that she said she, throughout the day and throughout the night, she has images of seeing George Floyd's murder. Only her child's, her husband's face or her son's face would be in the image. And it was very disturbing to her, and she's been trying to deal with that. But it shows that everyone who has, you know, who has a person in their lives that's vulnerable, that we no longer can just sit back from this. We are in it. We're living it. We're not observers. We're living it. And that was something we, she needed to talk about for a long, a long time. The other thing is that she says no one from her school has reached out to her. Not one person, not her administrator, not a colleague. And, you know, we deal with that, but it just came down on her now that school is over that who, who checks on her? As she walks those halls, does anybody check on her to see if she's okay? And she's not. So she did something, and she blamed me for this. So I guess I have to take responsibility. But she said that since she feels faceless at her end-of-the-year virtual meetings, she decided she would not use her video. And when I asked her why, she says, because I, I didn't want to put on a mask. She says, I did not want to have to put on a happy face because that's not, not how I was feeling. And if you go, if she says, if I did, people would, you know, you know, it, she just couldn't. She just couldn't. She needed to be who she was, and she needed not to wear a lie. So it was so interesting because earlier this week, I wanted to start this with a poem. And the poem is called "We Wear the Mask" by Paul Lawrence Dunbar. So I'm going to read that to you now. And this is dedicated to all of the Black and Brown children who have gone through this and all of the Black and Brown teachers across the nation that are doing their best, and in spite of everything, they are, know they're there to educate, and their promise is to educate. So "We Wear the Mask" by Paul Lawrence Dunbar. "We wear the masks that grins and lies and hides our cheeks and shades our eyes. The debt we pay to human guile with torn and bleeding hearts, we smile and mouth with myriad subtleties. Why should the world be overwise in counting all our tears and sighs? Nay, let them only see us while we wear the mask. We smile, but oh, great Christ, our cries to thee from tortured souls arise. We sing, but oh, the clay is vile beneath our feet and long the mile. But let the world dream otherwise. We wear the mask." So this was written in 1895, after the period of Reconstruction, when, when it looked like, wow, people finally were going to do the right thing. We soon found out that that was not going to happen. And it speaks to the experience of being a member of an oppressed group and what we have to do to cope. So really, we suffer, we wear two identities, our true self, but the self hidden behind the mask. Race isn't mentioned in this poem, but in all of his, Dunbar's work, it is. So people had, for their survival, to put on, throughout, throughout time, to put on a mask and to not let people think they were, think they were unhappy because we had to show happiness, we were forced to show happiness because that meant that slavery couldn't be so bad. Look how happy everybody is. So when I look at today and wearing the mask, we're wearing masks, and I think when you look at the demonstrations, that you see we have to wear the mask because we're the most vulnerable. And so here we are again, even though we have voices and we can speak, but we're still back hearing the mask. So it's, the irony of that is not lost on us. Now, when we say our children and staff are okay, we're being, we're just being bombarded with data reminding us all the time that we're not okay. That there, we are the major victims, and we know that. And yet, as we see people taking, having to go into work and take pub, public transportation, we see all of the things that we have to do, we see, we live the, the lack of resources that's come up, but we live that every day. And we knew before this came that that was going to be a problem, but then we had to scramble. So it's really interesting now with teachers. Be doing so, I, and I'm doing a Sunday School class using Zoom, and believe me, it's very different. We are some, we are, it's so different. Synchronous learning really hinders some of the ways that we really teach. When we teach our children and we're teaching our children content, but we're teaching our children, we can't be near them. We can't see them. Some, some systems don't allow you to, you know, see the, see the children. We teach our children, how can we teach them and not see them? Because we know how to teach them by what they tell us through their eyes, through their bodies. But I just say that I just commend all the teachers who have pulled this off, and I know it's not in our natural state. So when we add all of these things and the trauma of our young people, young people dealing with death, go in the classroom and say, how many people know someone who's been shot? A classroom's in the inner city, and you, you have, you have the hands. I never, I never had to experience that as a young, young child. So we're exhausted. We're dealing with our own emotions. We're reliving history, especially for me. I relived this moment too many times. We're seeing pictures on the media, but we're not just seeing they are invading us. And we have the issue of white people needing our help to deal with how they are feeling while we're trying to sort out our own feelings. And that's major because anyone who calls me during this time and needs to talk, I'm going to be there. But just as my friend said, but who's there for me? So the tears have started falling at this point. We're, we're at this point where we're out of the shock and we're thinking, and most of my conversations start with tears. We are starting to cry because actually, there's no place to hold them in. Bob?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Martha. I want to draw your attention back to what's happening in Connecticut. We're 25 years after the Schiff decision. We spent millions of dollars on magnet schools, open choice, and other attempts to end or at least mitigate some of the segregation we've had. What do you see as progress, lack of progress? What, what are you seeing? And what are you hearing from the communities of color in which you're involved about whether the education we're providing to students of color is adequate for where they're going to end up in the world?
Well, thank you for that question. That, that's a, that's a very complex question. There are a lot of things in there. The first thing that comes to mind, most of the things I've dealt with are lack of access to, you know, we have a system, and you know, whenever there's a system, we're the losers in the system. So many parents saying, I, I've tried this. I've tried this. I've tried this, and there's not a seat for me. There's not a seat for my child anywhere. So we, we, we have open choice. We have the magnet schools. But everyone, everyone can't get in them. And so that, that's our, that's our first problem. Because when you're rejected from that and your child knows, so when your child has to go back to the neighborhood school already, they, they, they go in with the rejection, and their friends say, I'm at this school, and we have this and that, and they're not. So that, that's the first thing. We've made, we've made a lot of gains, a lot of gains for, you know, with our children. But remember, CAPE has promised, you know, we have to educate all of our children. And so first of all, that's a promise unfulfilled. So I think it's, 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 you know, besides not having enough room and children not getting their, their choice, we have to look, just integration, just building a new school, just doing that is not enough. I worked in independent schools, so we had to become experts in how to deal with children coming from all different places and all different walks of life, not being in their neighborhoods. There needs to be a dedicated program to help children learn how to adjust to that and how to, how to help each other to do that. So it's, it's, it's a real stretch. The other thing is the, the magnet schools and the crack schools are theme schools. So I think the thinking is if you have a child who loves music, there's a school for that child. They can get academics, and we, they can really help that. However, you have children who are in those schools by default. And so say, if you're in the science and engineering school, and you don't really like science, but your mom says you're going there, you know, what is that? My granddaughter is, was in Anna Cracker School for the Arts. It's a wonderful school for her because she's in, she loves all of that. And I, I was at a parent meeting, and a parent said, I, I just, I have a problem with the fact that all children have to take an, have to learn an instrument. My child doesn't like music. And I wanted to say, what are you doing here? However, we take the choices we have. It was either go there or stay in your neighborhood school. If you're dissatisfied with the neighborhood school, then what are you going to do? We have standardized education, and my question is by whose standards? I think being, these schools have been able to relieve that a little bit because you sort of have leeway to have more music in the curriculum or more science and math. But still, I think about our children left in our neighborhood schools. We, we can't ignore them, and we have to do, we have to do everything we can to make sure the seats that they're sitting in are comfortable for them too. Okay, and you're out of order, you know.
I am out of order with my questions because I, you had done such a good job with the first one that I sort of took up some of the other, some of the other things.
So I really have to try to find my notes, find my notes if you flip around, but go ahead.
You know this better than anyone, Martha. What we're seeing with protests, I mean, we've seen that, those type of things before. We've seen protests. I grew up in the Vietnam War era. There were protests. There's civil rights era. There were lots of protests and marches, and I hope we've come somewhat of the way, as, as you were just saying. Why is this time different than the other times? Do you think it is?
This is different. This is very different. It feels very different. I see boldness that we didn't have before. I want to talk about the importance of having multi-generations and the, how that is so different from any marches that we've been in before. And I love that we're working with so many generations. I'm going to take the example of what happened in Philadelphia with the statue of Frank Rizzo, the former police commissioner and mayor. I, I call it the reign of terror because I lived through that. I lived through that. It was police brutality at its greatest. And so I, I remember that my father, who was a minister and a civil rights worker, was so exhausted from being called in the middle of the night to come to the hospital to pray for someone who had been beaten up by police. This is before police cams. This is before people could take, click cameras. He lost, he prayed as some died, some recovered. But that was happening in, you know, what's happening now is happening in the light. That was happening in the dark. Who knows what was happening? So my father's reward from, for all of that work was he was on a hit list. And my sister and I were in the kitchen one morning, and we were making breakfast, and the phone rang. My sister answered it, and she was like, yeah, okay, I will. So I said, what was that? She said, that was somebody who just called and said, is your dad home? She said, no. And well, would you give him a message? She said, okay, we had a pad there because we better take messages. And she started writing, and I noticed she had stopped, and he says, tell your dad I'm going to bomb his house tonight at midnight. So that's, that's the era I lived in. Therefore, when we protested, we were, we knew that we were marked, we were targeted, and at any moment, you know, something could happen. We were not, we were not protected. So I've told this story to my children, and they've told it to their children. So we have three generations. Now, what I never thought, I never would think that I could topple over a statue of Frank, of Frank Rizzo. Never. I knew the consequences. So that wouldn't have happened when I grew up. My children knew that I wouldn't be happy with that, you know, that, that they had to stay safe. But their children have come up in a different way. They have voice. That's why we know we're making progress. And it was like, let's do that. And they felt they could do it because they did not have those lingering layers of you can't, or this will happen, or you can't, because we've tried to bring them up in safety. Therefore, we need the experiences that those of our generation have had. We need the, the generation that came up cautious but questioning, and we need the boldness of the younger generation. And now I see as things are toppling, and, you know, I'm going to give kudos to all of our educators because, and teacher, all the teachers, educators, administrators, because it's obvious that we have taught our children how to solve problems, how to think critically and creatively. So even if some of these things aren't successful, but we're, I, I just can't imagine how these were, these, just how many people are coming out and how it's been sustained. What this generation will learn, they'll have to pass on to even their next generation. And if we keep that ball rolling, the, each, each time we have a series of protests, they will be different, and we'll keep moving forward. That's what gives, that was, that gives me a lot of hope.
Terrific, terrific. Let's, let's talk a little bit more about what's actually happening in the schools, Martha. What's it like for a student of color to go to a school where there are no teachers of color, there are no administrators of color? What, what is the effect on a, on a student in that kind of a situation?
They wear the masks. They learn that. Okay? I've, I've, this is really the experience I've had supporting those children. One reason for my justification of teaching in independent schools, when every, people used to say, but your children in our neighborhoods need you. I said, any child who's anywhere needs me. It is, they, children realize that this is an opportunity. All of my children realize, yes, I'll be able to do this, 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 or that's what they've been told. They don't true, always believe it because they, they have a sense of reality. My, just every day, I get children visiting and saying, can I just come in here and sit with you? Can I just cry? They need an outlet to talk about it. They're, they're getting a great education, but a lot of, they understand they are paying a price. They have to go back to their neighborhoods. They don't fit in. They don't see, they don't really fit, feel as though they fit in, and, you know, they cope. They hit middle school, and everything really changes in the middle schools and high schools because children listen, and we're all together, and when you, one has a party, everybody's invited. Is, is elementary school is environment. Middle school is tough for anybody. And that's when I got, you know, I really got the most, you know, real, really hard. Schools have to be open to not judging everything we do with our children. I wanted to start affinity groups a long time ago because I felt that the children have to walk feeling in a, being in a minority and feeling, you know, they have to get through their school day. There needs to be a place and a time in school where they can come in. They can start their conversation where they need to, to be. They don't have to worry about hurting anyone's feelings. And, you know, they need that, that, that release so they can go back and do what they have to do. So they, we have amazing graduates of schools who have been in that situation, and they've dealt with it. Some have not. We've lost some, and they've gone back to public school and done very well. But Michael Thompson, I think is his name, wrote a, wrote a piece, probably in the early 90s, about the psychological impact of children of color in independent schools. You know, my, a lot of my reading was independent schools, but that's transferable to the schools in the suburbs and things like that. So they're there, but someone needs to be there who's caring about them. My, my own children went to independent schools. And it was interesting, their school ended at ninth grade, and I gave them the choice to, to continue in independent schools or go to their town school, and without a doubt, they decided town school. And then it's just really interesting. I'd love to do a study on that. And then my third daughter, I, she didn't have a choice. I changed schools, and she was coming with me. So she went through independent schools as being one, you know, or just a few of, in many. And so it was interesting, her choices of colleges were HBCUs. So what, what does that tell you? She, she knew that now she needed to be in a different environment. And she, she thrived, she thrived in all of the situations and I'm happy and but I knew, I could see on my children, the, the struggle. So therefore it was up to me to make sure they, we were in a church in the inner city, so they could be in environments where they could feel, you know, so, so that, that would, that would nurture them. And everything was, that was done, had an eye, a lens on their needs. So, so it's good, but it's a little cost.
What, um, you know, Connecticut has now almost half of its student population, uh, kids of color. And the research shows that kids of color and white kids learn better when they have role models who are not always like them. Why, why are we, why do we only have less than 10% of our teachers, our teachers of color? Why are our numbers so low even though we've been fighting this battle for so many years?
Okay. If, if I really knew the answer, you'd be reading my books. But I, I've worked with, um, I've always worked with student and teacher recruitment. And, you know, through many conversations, I think the first question we have to ask is, if, if you're in a school and you want to recruit teachers of color or a system, what have you done an assessment of what they're coming to? And what, what they're going to have to deal with? Are your, you know, is this going to be a place where they're going to be able to teach? Or is it going to be a place where they're going to have to just take care of others? Is it, you know, it, what are the extra demands? We know that if we just, if we're going to teach an independent school, if we're going to be one of a few teachers, that we're going to be pulled in all kinds of situations that are outside of our job description. And that's going to take, that, that takes a lot, that takes a lot of energy. Um, I, I know we have great teachers out there who would love to teach. But in Connecticut especially, we have a lot of hurdles to get through. We have all that paperwork. I mean, you know, I, I, and I know the state has to do that and do their job. We need to continuously look at that. Because when a teacher is removed after three years because they haven't paid, you know, they, they can't get tenure because they haven't done this, this and this. Are we going back and looking at those reasons why and trying to figure that out? You know, and, and try to help them? It's, it's, it's sad because I see so many people and I say, you should be teaching. And I said, I wanted to, but I couldn't. Let's, when we hire, let's get some training about how we look at hiring. You know, some of our HBCUs are popular, Howard, Hampton, Spelman. And those are like, oh, well, if you're there, but if you're from another one that no one has heard of, it's kind of like, we don't really know that school, you know? I mean, you know, if you have Harvard or Columbia, you can walk in and immediately that sort of helps you. But when you're looking at resumes and hire, you have to know how to read through those lines and you have to put, do an unbiased approach. Of course, we know when we hire and when we're making decisions, we want people, we're comfortable hiring people who are like us, who look like us. So, you know, um, when we would, we, I did hiring fairs and we would talk about how you present yourself physically, because you walk through that door, that's your expression. You know, and that's, um, that's the time that, that you have to do that. Wearing the mask again, you know, the, the, the full, the full body mask. You know, and, and, and just, it's just hard like that. And then, um, you know, teaching, teaching is hard. Teaching is hard. And if you have to deal with racism there and you have to deal and you see the, the unfairness, you don't have a, you don't really get paid enough money. You really don't. If you have to use so much of your paycheck to put back into that, you, you just can't do that. And then you shouldn't have to beg. You know, if you're in a system, I mean, really some, I, I help teachers set up their, I help sit, part for teachers, uh, you and my friends, I help them set up their classrooms. And I am just amazed at what they don't have. You know, how do you teach without everything? So for, for a person of color who really wants to teach, I think, you know, sometimes they say, I, I, I don't know, I don't have the energy, I can't do this. But I do know that when I was growing up, it wasn't, I, I didn't have a teacher who looked like me until I was in sixth grade. And that was just for a half a year, then they changed the whole system. And so we were put in a, it was a A B system where you could start in September or January. And then they wanted all the children to start in September. So I lost my teacher and I never had another black teacher in my career until I was taking my master's degree. And I chose to have a black teacher. And it's amazing, I've gotten this far.
Obviously you had a lot of strong inner steel where, where you are now.
I just wish, you know, I just wish all the great people I know who would be great teachers were there in those classrooms for our children. So let's please, let, let's, let, let's really work on that. Let's not just settle and say, oh geez, the numbers are bad. And, you know, there are reasons. Somebody, somebody out there, ta, take it up. Because we're missing out on some, we're missing out on so much, our children are missing out on so much. And our white children are missing out on so much by not having, um, teachers. They just learn so much. And if they are going to really understand all of this, just being and observing and, and the things they learn, this is the feedback I get. I still have followers from my classrooms that thank me and say, I understand this now because of things you taught me. So it's important for all of us.
So, um, you know, school board members, superintendents now, uh, in this strange period when we're not at school, but we're sort of at school, uh, doing graduations and so on. How do you show people of color that they have allies?
Okay. So, um, this is, this is really interesting and there is not one, you know, every person is different. And I know that we have allies and we all know that we have allies. I think you show not by telling us, but by what you do. By, by your actions. You know, the, the question, how are you? People react differently. One person I talked to said, my boss called and said, how are you? And we want to talk, can you, you want to talk about this? And she appreciated it. Another person I talked to said, they haven't spoken to me like in 10 months. And then how are you? Are, are you serious? And, um, but I think, I think one of the things that, that I had never thought of was that someone I know said that a, a, a white ally called her up and said, I just want to tell you that I know you're in, you're in a place, that you're in a difficult place. And I've decided that I'm going to walk in every protest march I can. And I'm going to, because I know you're too tired to walk in all of them. But I'm going to walk in these and I'm going to name the person I'm walking for. And I want you to know, I walked on Sunday. And I named you, I was walking for you and your children. And, you know, and she was so moved by that. You know, so I guess my response to how are you doing is what are you doing? So really, um, you know, words are important and I think words are sincere. But just thinking about some things, first of all, there are lots of articles now on allyship. That's the, that's the word they're using. And some, some great tongue in cheek ones, there was one that, that got me to laughing. And it was sort of like, dear white people. And it went on and it says, and don't think that cash app, apping me is going to make any difference. So I was saying, you know, we talk about reparations and, you know, and all about that. And it wa, it was tongue in cheek, but you also have to understand during this time, if people say things like that to you, just, 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 just take it and roll with it because we don't want to say what we really want to say, you know, it could, it could have been something else. But are you, you can join the NAACP too. Or you can ask a friend, you can say, you know, would you, would you like to join an organization? I, I really like to finance that for you. I'd like to do it and, and in your name. You know, because you may not get around to it. Or, you know, what I would like is you send me a lot of articles, Bob and Patrice. I can't always access them because I'm out of my limit for the month of the and then, then I get something for, you know, a subscription and I can't. I, I, you know, it's just like, I, I have five people in my house I'm trying to feed, I'm trying to do that. And, and I, I want the news, but I can't. I mean, do you know, these, these simple things. Other really important thing is to just stand up when you see something and speak and speak. Because you know that your presence can change a situation. Use your privilege. You can use your privilege in so many ways. And it, this doesn't, and no one has to, no one has, you don't have to tell anybody about it. But you know, it, I, I'm just always appreciative when I'm in line. And obviously when the clerk gets, you know, looks at the people in line, I'm not next in their eyes. And they always go to somebody else, always. I don't know what it is. Does it look like I'm not really going to buy anything? And that person says she was next. Instead of, oh, okay. You know, it's, it's those kinds of things that need to be a part of you, that you do that automatically. You know, the people who are really hurting when they see that, like my former colleague, people who have sons and daughters of driving age. Think about them and pray for them and call them and say, how, how are your children doing? You know, are they, and I've been thinking about them. And the last thing is, um, don't criticize us because of how we choose to express our pain. Don't judge us. When we think about the looting, I'm not a proponent of looting, okay? But I understand why people loot. You know, try to get the understanding and the story behind that. Let's think about it. You grew up, you wore hand-me-downs or things from Salvation Army or, you know, you, you never really had your, your own, own clothes. Other people had computers, they had to come to your house and give you, they had to put a hotspot and a computer because you just never had those things. You go through life not having. You know, you live here and there, you never know when you come home and you, you're then to your day will be sitting on a park bench trying to figure out where you're going to live. You see everybody else and they lure you in the stores, they have the Jordans up there and all. And you know, you can't afford them and you go with whatever you have. And the kids who can't afford it are making fun of you. And you're out and there's a glass that's broken and there's some things in there you were never able to have. And you jump through the glass at risk to yourself and you take a pair of sneakers. Why are people concerned about that more than the fact that you are living in poverty? And you're expected to just suck it up? You know, forgive them. Forgive them. They just see something that they, and they have a chance to get something. Because they know in their life, they're not going to have a chance to have the same things that you have. So forgive them, don't judge them.
Thank you. Thank you. Cause I think that, that sort of puts a good cap on a lot of what we've talked about and what you've shared with us, especially the personal stories. You, you've been a Cabe consultant since, since, uh, I guess last spring and, and my last question.
Sometimes it feels like it.
Yeah, yeah. Can you talk about what resources are available from Cabe for as we sort of head back to school? You know, we, we didn't really get into what I've seen in a lot of discussions about explicit bias, implicit bias, white privilege, all those types of things. That wasn't what this was meant to do. You can't do that in an hour and a quarter. But, but we're putting you out there, we're hoping you work with schools. And we just, I'd just like to hear from you what you see as coming up in the next few months.
Okay. Well, I think that I have those prepared because we were going to do our first workshop on implicit bias, March 14th. I remember the date. And so I am, I am prepared to do those things. But I, I think you need to, you know, you need to really look at where you are, where your system is and see what you need, just, just by talking to people, you know, figuring that out. And whatever it is, you know, we can help you. I've done, I've done workshops on so many things. And I just want to say, um, if you use Cabe, that we will make sure we tailor it. You're not going to get a canned presentation. And you're not going to get my workshop on something that I just sort of, oh, I'll just re, re-image this, you know, really use my same one, but, but should that satisfy? I start from the beginning. For, we start from the beginning for every, with everything we do. And I really think implicit bias is key. You know, thinking about identity and sort of things like that. Pardon me?
You got to start with yourself.
Yes, it begins with yourself because intellectually you can have information. But unless you start to own it and make room for it by throwing out all of those other things, learning how to do that and make room for the new information, you know, there's not going to be real change. And it's not changing intellectually only. What I want to see, and I think this is so important, is a real change of heart. You can do things, if your heart doesn't change, whenever it gets uncomfortable, you're going to stop. And, you know, so that, that's really important. So, so doing workshops, identify people in your towns that can facilitate conversations. It, it's great if you do that. Start to, to start to look, you have a gold mine right near you. And if you, if you don't, you, you can come to us and you can do that and we can help you go and find somebody or we can facilitate conversations for you while you're, you know, while you're in that. I have the Equity Toolkit, just happen to have, you know, I have to carry it everywhere. And this is, um, this is a great tool that's just come out. I call it using teacher speak, you know, your primer. So there are lots of basic concepts and basic things in here. And you can, it's a great place to start. And, you know, great suggestions and we can help you with all, all that you're reading in there. We can explain it, we can tailor it to you. But remember, you're going to have to commit to do the work. But um, remember, you're going to have to commit to do the work. The real work. We can do it, we can help you, but you live it. So you have to do the work. We have resources. I have 10,000 articles on everything. Which is good, but I, what I love is book discussions. And I just talked to Bob about um, maybe film discussions. Let's see if we can um, you know, everything doesn't have to be a planned workshop. We can just come and have a conversation with you. And see, okay, you know, if you, you just want to talk, we'll listen and you know, give input. There's just so many ways. We can't just rely on one way.
Thank you. Thank you, Martha. I'd like to open this up to questions. I can't see any. See the list of people uh, who are in attendance, Marie?
Okay, so we do have, yes, I can. So we have a, a comment. So I'll start there. It says, dear all, some of us are Board of Ed members who are people of color and we are not okay. So that was a comment by Katina Caban Owen.
Wait, could, can you speak up a little, please? Can you repeat that?
Sure. Uh, we had a comment from Katina Caban Owen. And her comment said, dear all, some of us are Board of Ed members who are people of color and we are not okay.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, she has left the, the chat, but um, she just wanted to mention that.
Okay, I do, I understand that. I am a board, I am a trustee of a school, a person of color and one of three people of color. And I'm not okay. I understand that and I hear that. It hit me one day, oh, when I was on my first Zoom call with our board. Because normally I'm sitting there looking at everybody else and listening to everybody else and trying to figure it out. When I saw everybody and then I saw I, me with them, I got this feeling like, oh my gosh, what am I doing here? This feel, you know, just to see it in that perspective. Let me just tell you um, an experience that I had that when I knew I wasn't okay, and I've been on boards, I've been on boards since the um, early nineties. So is, this is something I'm really used to and I've been the only one most, on most of them. They started by saying, give something really positive about this whole thing that we're in now and something that you wish were better. So I started with mine and I talked about living in a house with my, um, with um, three generations and how the difficulty in that and two, my two grandchildren being on the front line, working in a supermarket and sort of trying to keep our space, but yet still be a family and how hard that was. And then, you know, I said my other thing and then they started talking. And as people were talking, I realized why I wasn't okay. Some of the things were, well, you know, we stayed in our house, we let our children, our college children go to the lake house. And then the um, house at the Cape, we told our grant, you know, and it was like, what? There are choices? And I said, now wait, I was chosen to be on this board. I have as much or more education. I've, I've been working, you know, I have a lot to add educationally, not just, you know, diversity wise. Why am I, why am I not okay right now? It was in my face as to, here I am wanting to do things. My agenda and sort of my life is so different. And how did that happen? Yet I'm called upon to try to help everybody else. I think I had mentioned to, to Bob one time that I'd love to get an affinity group with board members of color. How we could do that, well, we know now how we can do things by distance, but we weren't thinking that way. I'm wondering, would it be helpful if we could just get together and talk through being on a board, what it means to us or, you know, I'd be hap, I'd be happy to convene something or something like that, but I know you're not okay. And my question is, first of all, thank you for saying that. So your other board members and chairs will know. But then what do we want to do about it?
And we can certainly help, obviously. We'd like to. Another question, Marie?
Yes, um, we have a question from Colleen Clark. And she said, rather than add more magnet schools, how do we improve neighborhood schools in the cities?
Say that again. I'm, maybe I need to turn this up a little bit more. Okay, that's better. Read it again.
Okay, so it says, rather than add more magnet schools, how do we improve neighborhood schools in the cities?
Okay, thank you for that. I've worked with many teachers in the neighborhood schools in the cities. Teachers feel as though they're not being heard. They have plenty, plenty of good, of great ideas. You, you, we have to not pigeonhole our teachers and keep them just to do the work in the classroom. They really need to have their voices heard. So you can talk about the real lived experiences of these children. Listen to them. The answers are there, but we get, we put so much, you know, I, I was a teacher for many years. When I became an administrator, I had to be very deliberate about remembering that I'm a teacher. Because I had so many things pulling at me and I had to get things done and it, my response just wouldn't, I would, you know, I wasn't in that situation where I had to do it. It was, well, we can't do that. We can't do that. But we really do need to listen to the teachers. There's the whole issue of funding. I mean, but.
Heard about it.
You know, I.
Resources.
It, it's ju, they are not there. They are not there. I don't know where they are. And even if they're there, it's so hard to get them. You have to fill out this form, you have to fill out that form. And then even when you, I, I have a friend, she didn't have, there were these tables in her classroom and she asked for desks. And they said, we're going to get some. So about November, the, the desks arrived at the schools. And so she walked in and they had given her some old desks and they had given the new desks. She doesn't know where they went. She couldn't even let her children in the classroom until she cleaned them up. I mean, please, you know, and paper? I was at a school one time, we were having a meeting there and we needed to make a copy. So somebody said, oh, I'll take my own copy, uh, my own paper, I'll go make copies. And she came back and we said, well, where are the copies? She says, oh, they took, they, they took whatever it was away. So she couldn't even make copies with her own paper. I'm like, how, how are you treating the people who are closest to your children? So we need to really get out there and fight for better funding. We know in Hartford, mo, the percentage of renters is so, so much higher than everyone else. So we're not getting, you know, the suburbs, the way they get it, they get a lot of money because their houses are worth a lot and their property taxes are a lot. And they, that, that's, that's a whole issue, but that's something we need to fight and that, that's what we have to do. Teachers are doing the best they can with what they have, but we need to give them what they have, what they need.
Next question, Marie. Excuse me.
So Kate Howard Bender said or asked, um, has teaching been a real viable career option for college students? Has the issue been that education is not as respected a profession as some other professions?
Well, there, I used to do a seminar called, I, I attended a seminar and then I replicated it with permission. I'm just a teacher. And that was about how we feel being teachers and talking about how people think of us and think of our profession. And we have to remember, it's one of the first and true professions. Yet we are so often put in a position where we're not treated as professionals. And that, that's really sad. And I have worked in inner city Philadelphia. I've worked in Bloomfield. I've, oh, I've done the summer programs with the Hartford, um, Hartford schools. So, and have been in independent schools. So everywhere I felt as though I wasn't respected as much as I deserve to be. And that, um, I, I wonder if I had to do it over again today when I look at, you know, all the really glitzy opportunities that college students have. I kind of look and say, why would I be a teacher instead of going to, you know, doing one of those? I almost left education. I had a job. It was at Connecticut Mutual as a, a offer as a job as an underwriter. And I was three days from accepting it when I got a call to come and, come and um, there was opening at a school. And I said, well, I'm, I'm going, you know, I'm, I'm not doing that. And um, you know, I had uh, two children then and I said, I'm going to have to provide for them. This teaching check is not going to do it because my first check was six thousand and some dollars a year. I mean, that's what I earned as a teacher starting in, in the seventies, six thousand a year. So I, so I knew that and I was going to switch over. And I, I made the mistake of visiting the school and I knew that I'm a teacher at heart. So I said, I'm, I, I have to come back to teaching. I can't. So I gave up a job where I could have made, you know, big money and followed my heart. I don't regret it at all, but I am glad that I learned to figure it out, how to still make a, make a good living. I started my own business. Uh, my husband and I started a T-shirt business. And basically that's how we, we had to, you know, and, and that, that's a shame. So many teachers have to work other jobs. And you go home and you're still working. You have weekends and you're still working. Report card week, when are your report cards due? Do you think we have time to do that within our job day? No, no. So um, I, it, it, it's not respect. I mean, there's simple things like if you go to a company, they come and you know, you get your, you get your desk and you get business cards. How many teachers have business cards? How many teachers have cards that they give out? And so we decided we were going to all do this new thing called, oh, let's get business cards. Let's, let's, let's see how we could up our profession, at least for ourselves, feel good about ourselves. But, but really it's, it, it isn't. So you, if you're going to be happy in it, you have to have the love for it. But it, um, we really need to look at what a teacher, especially a single teacher, how a single teacher has to live. My first job, my first job in Philadelphia, I didn't, right out of college, I didn't, hadn't, you know, I didn't have enough money to get a car. So I took the bus and that was into the inner city and I was standing there waiting for the bus with the kids. And um, one little boy came up and said, hey, you're a teacher in our school. I said, yeah. And he says, why don't you drive, why don't you, why don't you have a car? And I kind of looked at him and said, I, I, I've got one. I get one. I just don't have one right now. And okay, you know, just, just simple things. It's a lot, but thank you for your question.
You have another one, Marie?
Yes. So this is from Douglas Foil. In thinking about open choice students going into suburban schools, a concern I've heard is that open choice students will be too far behind academically to succeed academically if they enter the schools in later grades, say, starting in sixth grade. Is this concern justified and what can be done to facilitate this transition?
In some cases, there are, there are gaps. You know, because in, where I worked, we, we would get student, we would get students from um, you know, inner city schools from, from, from public school. You know, and, and we, we had gaps, but we, we were able to fill that gap, those gaps. But I found amazingly so that even if they came in with gaps, with the right teaching and the right support, you can fill those gaps because it definitely is an opportunity gap. There were things that we could do that they just weren't exposed to. And it's really, learning is exposure to as many things as possible so that you're, you can relate to the content. I, I remember playing a game where kids would sit in a circle and we would na, we would do a, a name a topic and you had to uh, say as many things as you could that were related to that topic, that were a part of that. Before an eraser went around the circle, you know, it was teaching children to think with, with pressure and focus. So one of the kids said, um, oh, kinds of, kinds of ski equipment. And I had one other, I had one little boy of color in my classroom. And all the other kids said, no, no, that's too easy. That's too easy. We know all of those. And he just looked at me and I just looked at him and we were like, not in. And, and that's a, a parent who was full pay, but he had not had that experience of skiing. And it's just a matter of um, it, it's, it's reality that children will come in, but, but you have, you have to work with them. And it, don't give up on them. And you have to understand that a lot of it is opportunity gap. But if you're providing what you need to provide, they can catch up, might catch up amazingly. It's like, oh, I never knew that before. And then they can take that information and they have it. You know, all children can learn. But I do know that um, as a parent, that would be something that really did concern me. And so you need people who are going to be concerned and on the lookout and will be able to, to do that without um, marginalizing them or, or um, naming them as a, a child who can't learn.
That's really interesting, Martha, because we've always heard that suburban schools like to take kids in kindergarten because they come up and they have the culture and they develop friends at the same time. But certainly, you know, it is an opportunity gap. It's, it's not a question of, well, they're not smart enough or they, they just don't get it. Um, it's really a question of not having the, the opportunities. Thanks, Doug.
Right, right.
Yes, so this is from Michelle Ambri Koo. I'm so glad to see us having these difficult conversations because we are long overdue. Our community is crying out for more curriculum to address racism. Yet in this politically charged environment, I want all of our teachers to first have the tools and confidence to have these discussions. How can we be sure to do this effectively?
First of all, thank you for um, naming racism. For many years, as soon as we said the word racism, the conversation stopped because people could not handle it. So for, we have to name our issues in order to talk about them. When, when I think of what's happening about Mr. Floyd, let's, that not name it the incident, let's name it murder. And then we can start to really talk about what it is, you know? True, teachers, we really do need to train teachers on how to have. to train teachers on how to have difficult conversations. Because I think teachers would love to do it. People would love to have those conversations, but they're afraid of offending. I think what teachers need to do some, well, people need to do some work on your own. There's a book, White Fragility, for those who are white. And, you know, just to own up to why you react and why you're afraid of things. Um, I do a book talk with um, Waking Up White, where someone realizes, wow, all the things that I thought America was like are not. And her coming into that and being able to, it was taboo to talk about it. You couldn't even talk about things in many people's backgrounds. So we have to understand first the why people are uncomfortable about having these conversations. And then, we need to, um, we can help you do that work about getting to a place where you are comfortable. I know people don't want to offend. And if someone has a rough question that comes back to them, that they may not be able to answer, they're afraid of that. So why put yours, nope, who wants to put yourself in a situation that's going to be uncomfortable, that you're not sure you can handle? So um, one, one good thing is, if you have a group of friends who are all interested in learning this, do some practice work on each other. You know, there, there are many, there are tools you can use. Li Menghua has, there's a Stive Stir Fry, Stir Fry seminars or stirfry.com has something about their cards, and it's to talk, ways to talk about conversations hard topics. And you sort of get one, and you have to say it, you know, and we've done, I've done that with groups, and things like that help. But get, get, get a group of people who you trust and say, let's try, let's start practicing with ourselves. You know, and then um, I would not, never have a really hard conversation if, if, if I didn't really feel secure. As a first way of meeting with a group, you need to do some work so you develop trust, you develop your ground rules. And then those really hard convers- conversations can start to happen the more you meet on issues that aren't as hard for you. You can't just, you know, you can't jump into a pool without getting, you know, learning a few ways to swim first, before you get into that deep water.
You have another one, Marie? Let's go on for just another few minutes. I think we owe it to the, the participants if they want to, or attendees if they want to ask a question.
So I have one from Meg Scotta. She says, Martha, you mentioned that Cave has an unfulfilled promise to educate all of our children. Can you elaborate on what you mean?
Okay, that, that is our, um, that is Cave's goal. Now, I've been in this just a few months, but I, I have read the vision and the, the mission. And um, until, here's my thing, for all of us, until each and every child is given an education, we're, we, we haven't fulfilled our obligation. The worth of every child, of one child, is the same as every child. So we can't educate some of the children some of the time, all of the children some of the time. We have to educate all of the children all of the time. So Cave is doing a great job. Our schools are producing great citizens. We're doing a great job with a lot of kids. But to me, I have the face of that one child we're not reaching. I have the life of that one child always that I carry with me and look for. And as long as we have that one child, that we need to continue to do the work.
Go ahead, Marie.
So she, she also said, um, this is a very complex conversation, and I applaud Cave for beginning it, but it's only a baby step. So Diane.
Can I just react to that? And, you know, I, I've gone through a number of SDE trainings about systemic racism and and white privilege and all those things. Um, and what I realize is that this work is never done. You never reach closure. You never feel, oh, we achieved equity, everybody is happy. We have to look at it that way. Because if, if anybody ever thinks, well, we had one conversation for an hour and a quarter on, on equity, they really understand what our black communities are going through, and our black teachers and, and students, uh, just doesn't work that way. And you have to start with, as I said before, you have to start with yourself. You have to understand your own internal biases. And we plan to keep this going as far as discussions. And again, we're, we're very willing to take a lead in helping people work through these issues.
Could, could we hear the rest of her question?
Sorry.
No, no, no. Thank you, but I, I, I'm always mindful, being a teacher, that I don't want to leave anything hanging for a child, so the same for adults. Want to make sure we do that before we leave.
Yeah, no, um, you answered her earlier question. She just made that comment afterwards. So I have another one from Diane Laja. Her comment says, magnet schools were created based on a legal decision, Chef versus O'Neal. Working in a magnet school, the diversity is what I wish for all schools, but it doesn't happen. So that was just a comment. Mike Sinatra. So he said, how do we eliminate economic segregation in Connecticut schools? We need to continue on Chef versus O'Neal. How can board members support this effort?
You want to go with that, Bob, or?
Thanks. Um, obviously, one of the things we're concerned about is uh, resources. You know, we've always seen some of these issues, especially segregation, in terms of housing, in terms of transportation. There are so many issues that have to be tackled if we're going to help the, uh, the students in the inner cities. And at least for now, we have built many magnet schools, and we also want to help um, the internal neighborhood schools. So I think there has to be discussions, there have to be uh, understanding at the legislature of the needs, uh, and the, the needs for resources to, to do all those things. I don't think the schools by themselves can uh, overcome socioeconomic uh, factors that are of so many years standing. But at least when we have the conversations, and we talk to each other, a um, a city uh, Board of Education member with a suburban one, sometimes there are things that we can work together on. And that's what I think we have to do. And I think that's what we try to do with the networking, with the discussions, with our convention, with our um, board chair work. That's, that's really what we have to do, and we have to focus more on that issue.
Can I just add something to that? Um, I, I'm married to a chair, a board chair. And um, so as a board member, you can help by not having the chair and vice chair go into the budget process and have to face, we have to face our town council, and they have to be the spokespersons. They need to make sure that you're supporting them, and you're behind them, and you are helping to spread the need that we need to have resources for our children. So um, that way, you must present a unified front to our town councils, or wherever you get your funding, that this, this is really should be non-negotiable. How can you keep cutting this? How will it affect children? So you need to be a part of the, of the process. You need to look, you need to listen, you need to be talking to people. You need to be able to support with authority, because you have done your research. And because so many times, the politics of, um, you know, the politics will get involved. And it can be, well, I don't like that board chair, so we're not going to give money to the school system. You hate to think that happens, but it does happen. Or other people who are making the decisions about whether they give you the money or not, don't really understand the impact. Um, they're, they have to listen to all their constituents, to all of the, you know, they have to answer, why are you giving so much money to schools, to the people who don't have children in the school system? And they have to do that. But I think if you just add your voices to what your chairs are doing, and make sure they have their support, you, um, it, it's much more powerful. So as a board member, make sure you're in the, you know, really paying attention to that process.
Thank you. Marie, I think at this point, um, we've gone over the time we had. And I want to thank uh, Dr. Brackeen Harris. Uh, love working with you, Martha, and I'm sure our boards will find that the same, that they will love working with you. Please, if you have more questions, uh, you can send them to me or directly to Martha, you can see our email addresses on the screen. And we, this is the start of something, it's not the end of something. We're going to keep these conversations going. Please let us know what ideas you have for, for workshops. Have a wonderful and hopefully restful weekend, and we'll see you next time.
Bye bye, thank you, everyone.